Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 13 Public Works Finance Committee meeting of the Moscow City Council. To my right is Councilmember Dan Carscallan, to my left Councilmember Art Petke. To his left is City Supervisor Gary Redner, and I'm Walter Steed, Chair of the Committee. First item on the agenda, gentlemen, is the approval of the September 22 minutes.
Looked good to me.
I'm okay with approving them as well.
Okay, Gary, we will consider them approved. Second item is partial disbursements report for September 2014, and Sue Nelson gets to present to us today. Good afternoon.
It's been a very busy month for accounts payable in all the departments around the city. Some of the highlights of the payables this month were $327,000 payment to the Moscow School District for the play fields. There was work done for the Rotary Park and East City Parks for playground equipment and landscape structures for an estimated $66,000. Big-ticket item, again, was a large freight liner truck for the Water Department, $173,000. They also did, the Water Department did, painting of the Northwest Reservoir for $41,000 and work on the North Polk Loop at $48,000. And Street Department did paving from Third Street to A Street for an estimate of $49,000. Those are just some of the highlights of the activity closing out the year for the city.
Okay, and the payment to the School District was 50% of invoices on the playfield construction work, I presume?
Yep.
And freight liner truck?
It's a utility truck. It was, it's being, was specked out, I think, a year ago, and just, we took delivery of it.
And does what looks like what? Freight liner, I see a 40-foot box truck. That's not what we're talking about, is it?
It is a box.
The truck in question is the water service truck, and so the distribution crew does most of the water distribution system maintenance out of that truck. So it's a large, it's like a large utility truck, so has bins to hold parts and tools.
Okay, thank you. You knew what it was all along.
I kind of stay on top of that stuff.
Are there any questions?
I'm okay with approving it.
Art?
I'm good with it.
I am as well.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
She does it the easy way.
She does.
Want to hand around the notebook?
She knows what she's doing.
I don't know why we don't do it this way every time. Maybe because Sue won't be back to do this for a month or two.
Use the special pan, Art.
Use the special pan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am. Come back to see us. Okay, item three on the agenda, single-stream curbside recycling transition plan from Mr. Tim Davis.
See if I can get this PowerPoint to come on. I keep them up in practice.
I like your logo.
Thank you. I gave a report to the same committee on August 25th, basically an overview report with some of the pros and cons of single-stream recycling. At that time, Public Works Finance directed staff to bring forward a plan for eventual transition to single-stream recycling, and the committee was interested in changes that might happen to the existing system and what costs it would entail. Staff recommendations for changes from our current curbside recycling system would be, and I'll touch on these individually as we move through, go to an every-other-week collection with implementation of single-stream using 95-gallon roll carts. Would also recommend that we use a different color cart from what we currently use.
What do we have now, three cycles for garbage?
We have three sizes, three sizes. I would recommend going to a 95, just simply for capacity and going every other week so people have enough room to store it. I would suggest using a different color, possibly a green, different color from the garbage carts, just to be able to tell them apart, and maybe put a recycle logo or recycle-only type stamp on the carts. They also make mold-in inserts, which could have a listing under the lid, would be molded right into the bottom of the lid stating what is acceptable, what's not acceptable. And that would only be part of the instructions, of course, but that would be something that stayed with the cart, and if there was any questions, you can get a lot of material on those instruction. And then we'd be able to run single-family collection one week, and then apartments on alternating weeks, where we currently don't offer curbside recycling to the apartments. The other major change that-
Let me interrupt you, Tim. For your purposes, apartments are classified as over fourplexes?
Correct, correct. I would also recommend excluding glass from the curbside collection, and I would recommend doing that prior to the implementation of single-stream, should council decide to implement that, possibly eight to 10 weeks prior, just so people get acclimated to that.
And the reasoning behind that?
And I will go into that further as we move along. I would also establish one or two additional glass drop-off locations in addition to Moscow Recycling, possibly something out by East Side, possibly something out by the Palouse Empire Mall. This is, and I'm sorry if that's not very clear, I did bring a handout of this because I wasn't sure how that was going to show up, but that's just a sample of what we might put underneath the lid with the instructions. A yes on the materials that we do accept and a no on the materials that we don't. And that's just for an example.
What happens if something changes?
That's where we run into a problem, so we'll want to be sure that we, it's a lot easier to add things to the list than it is to take them off. We've been working and talking with a processor over in the Seattle area, and I've got this list directly from them, so, and basically just kind of Moscowized it.
So-
And this isn't an end list by any means, it's just kind of an example of what we could have imprinted on the back of the lid.
Could you, could you not have two lists, one that's an all-inclusive, this is the list, and one that's much less inclusive on the inside of the lid? In other words, the inside of the lid say things like "no glass,"
Sure, sure.
And the other big items that you want to include or exclude, as opposed to trying to get down to all the little details?
Sure. Like I said, I just wanted to provide this as an example. The biweekly collection would add some efficiencies and lower the cost. Like I mentioned before, curbside single-stream could be made available to apartment complexes where we don't currently do that. We potentially have 4,000 apartment units out there that don't receive curbside recycling. Increased tonnage can be collected without additional staff or collection equipment by going biweekly. The same amount of material, or more material, could be picked up with the same staff and equipment that are, that's currently being used by going biweekly.
So this would also, this would also change the trucks that they do get it with?
Possibly, possibly.
We may actually see the single-man trucks-
Eventually, that would be where we would want to head. What I would, what I foresee, at least initially, in the first year, if we decide to go this direction, is either pick it up with a front loader, you know, the fork loaders with an auto can on the front, that they can physically see what's being dumped in, or a rear loader. But, you know, we'll, we'll put that in the RFP and see how, how that comes back. But I wouldn't recommend going directly to an automated truck, especially with a new program like this, because once those carts are dumped, the whole load's contaminated with, if one cart's got a bunch of stuff in it that we can't see, you know, and this is, this is going to develop as time goes on, I think. The other thing that we'll need to do is develop and distribute a collection calendar to help folks through this transition, on days they will be collected. It'll take a little bit of getting used to. Some of the other communities I've looked at, Pullman and Lewiston, have, have already gone and implemented biweekly collection, and it seems to work fine.
City of Meridian puts out a magnetic full-year calendar with recycled dates in red.
As does Lewiston.
Okay, yeah, it works really good.
Looked at a number-
Slap it on their refrigerator, and then if they can't remember, was it last week or next week, they can look and see.
Right, and if all else fails, we'll see what your neighbor's doing.
Yeah, if everybody's out but you, maybe you're wrong.
Yep. And then back to the glass. I wanted to throw some numbers out here. Moscow Recycling accepts 565 tons of glass annually total down at the recycling center. Of that amount, 65% of that glass that's accepted is delivered directly to Moscow Recycling currently. 35% is collected curbside. 38% of current curbside recycling volume by weight is glass. And in the report, in the overview that I gave earlier, we talked about the processing costs when we bail and ship the single-stream. That cost is going to be in the $75 a ton range. And if you remember, I, in the overview report, I brought up a slide that showed what the market values were of those commodities. And the glass, you also get docked in an additional $30, so now we're looking at $105 a ton to send glass to a processor, when ultimately you bail and break that glass and ends up getting landfilled anyway. That was the case when I visited the MRF up in the city of Spokane, the Waste Management Site. They're, they're putting that stuff right in the landfill. It just does not make sense to include glass in single-stream, to me.
So if glass ends up in a landfill, and you're recommending that we not accept glass in single-stream recycling, should we go there, why would you increase the places people could haul glass to throw it if they would save their gas and just throw it right in their garbage can?
Because we are-
Which is the landfill anyway.
It does go out there, but we are utilizing it out there, and we're diverting it locally. My point is, instead of paying $105 to ship it off and contaminate the single-stream and pay $105, why do that?
I understand not putting it in single-stream, I get that.
But I guess what Walter's asking is, why, why separate it out at all?
Throw it in with the rest of the trash-
Why not throw it in with the rest of the trash?
Off it goes to Oregon.
Well, you know, we've been doing that for a number of years here locally and diverting it, and they're able to use it for roadbed material and different uses out at the landfill site. They're not dumping that directly in the landfill, so that goes toward-
So we're also not paying to ship it to Oregon?
Yeah, we're not, we're not paying to ship it to Oregon either.
Okay.
So we're saving tonnage there?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, that's the one.
But by putting it in two other locations, we just make it that much more convenient, you know? If somebody shops at Safeway, put something maybe out by East Side, or if somebody shops at Wincole, there's something out there, and then we have something centrally located for folks.
Like you're saying already, the bulk of it is going to the recycling center rather than being collected curbside, so-
Correct.
Just take glass off curbside.
So participations and volumes, the actual participation rate and the ultimate tonnage that is collected in a new single-stream program is going to determine the cost. And those numbers aren't exact, there's some guesswork in this. And I'm going based off historic data that we've got from residential curbside recycling, but as of now, with the glass, we're collecting about 525 tons annually. If we exclude that glass from curbside, that number is reduced down to 327 tons annually. So I took that same data and applied it to the apartment units, and I estimate that we'll collect about 233 tons annually as a baseline. So with residential and apartments combined, we're looking at 560 tons annually. And I put an example here on the bottom, because this is going to affect the cost of the program, but in the first year, using that baseline tonnage, if volumes increased by 50% the first year with implementation of single-stream, which it could, this would require 55 cents per customer per month to cover that $75 processing fee.
An additional 55.
An additional 55.
So what, no matter what the market is for-
This is just the processing-
This is the price of processing it.
Yep. What the, what the markets do is-
I guess my question, are we going to see a return on that that's going to wash some of that 75 bucks off? Is that going to come back to the city?
That will depend on the markets, but that, that processing cost is a set cost. The markets are going to vary, so our return is going to vary as the markets do.
And are we, is it, I guess my question is, is it going to return clear back to the city, or is that going to stop at Latah Sanitation, or whoever is doing, Moscow Recycling is doing?
The revenue for sold commodities now, Latah Sanitation, Moscow Recycling, keeps, and that won't change with this.
But with that-
As it currently stands. So that $75 comes directly out of their revenue, so that is a, or a cost that the city is going to have to make up, and that was the purpose for this example.
Gary?
So the $75 goes to, would go to LSI?
No.
Okay, that's paid to the-
The MRF for processing.
Okay. So what, are you going to get, what your proposal is, or what you estimate it will cost to LSI for this program?
Well, the $75 will be a direct cost to them.
Okay, no, what will they, they're not going to collect this for free, so what are we paying for that?
Well, there's already a price that's embedded within our base fee now.
Right.
So we won't know what that cost is. We know what this cost is, and this will be a cost that will have to be made up, and that will come back in the RFP.
And they, and that's where they may say, well, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, it's, we'll, we figure we'll get an average of 50 bucks for the material, so we're going to pass on this 25 bucks. I mean, and again, I'm not saying that's what it's going to be, but that might be the example what they would come up with. This is what it'll cost the city, is the net.
Mm-hmm.
But we, we wouldn't want a fluctuating net, we would want-
Absolutely, absolutely.
But we're currently paying LSI to do curbside recycling.
Mm-hmm.
That's in the contract. There's some number, per something.
Yep.
That will go away with single-stream, so that amount of money is available to pay them to do the single-stream recycling. Whether or not they want more or less to do that is yet to be determined. They currently get to keep the revenue from the sale of the commodity, and what Tim is saying, that at the moment, the thinking may be that would continue as well. They get that revenue.
LSI right now gets collection money for curbside collection. They get paid a per-ton fee for all of the commodities brought to the recycling center, whether through curbside, by their own trucks, or dropped off. Then they're able to retain-
By the city?
Yes. And it's, it's a sliding scale, it's built on-
It's no longer a sliding scale, it's a set fee when we redid the franchise-
Set per-ton fee. And then they sell the commodities, and they retain the profit on the commodities.
Okay.
So that's how the system works now.
So what we've got to do is describe to LSI, and I'm probably getting ahead of your story, what system we're proposing, and they're going to just have to sit down with the council and figure out-
And they'll have to respond.
-what it will or won't cost us to implement that.
Mm-hmm.
Is the 50% increase in recycled materials a product of your asking recent converts to single-stream, what their experience has been?
It is. That and the combination of the convenience of single-stream, I'm expecting that we'll get a larger participation rate, based on what other communities have seen.
Okay.
So this talks more about the RFP and the franchise agreement. Single-stream curbside recycling services are not currently contemplated under the franchise agreement. So if the city desires that a new service be provided, we would issue an RFP to LSI. They would then have 30 days to respond, at which time the city would review and bring back to council those results, and then determine if that's the direction we want to go.
Back, back up if you don't mind, I hadn't gotten through that.
I'm sorry.
That's the process under the current franchise.
So with council direction, staff will issue an RFP to Latah Sanitation for single-stream recycling service, and this is just kind of a timeline and the steps that will have to be taken for a transition. We'll review that, we'll bring it back to city council. If it is adopted by council, we can then begin a phased implementation. Big in this is going to be promotion and education and getting the word out to folks, establish the additional glass deposit location or locations, order glass containers, which are essentially 20-yard roll-offs with side windows in them where glass can be put in, order the roll carts for the program. I forgot one there. Oh, the participation and sign-up. I can envision doing a mass mailer like we did with the roll cart program, just to see who wants to participate. I'm assuming that-
There you ask people, what size container do you want? This would ask, do you want a single-stream container?
Absolutely, yes.
So you wouldn't give every household a single-stream container?
I would not, because we'll end up having carts everywhere and chasing them down, and people seeing they absolutely don't want them, but I believe that we will have more people want them or not.
They would be by order only?
So I'm, this is, this is, again, is a little bit of a guessing game. We don't know what the participation rate's going to be, but I'm basing it on 70% participation rate.
I think your, your idea of stopping glass collection under the current system early is a great one, to break people of the habit of putting glass in the recycle.
And that will also-
And it's very simply done by LSI, they just don't take it, they just don't put it in the truck.
And that, that would come with time, and part of the promotion and education, seeing a date certain, you know, no more glass will be collected curbside, however, we do have these other drop-offs.
Yeah, we have these locations, right.
I think I got through those. We would work with the property management companies and apartment owners on logistics and arranging for those new services. That will take a bit of time for some, we have some unique areas, some it will be very easy. And then I would like, if we move forward with this, to distribute roll carts as close to that start date as we possibly can. They found in Pullman that they handed those out like a month and a half or two months early, and they were sat out the next week full, people had saved up, no one was coming.
The same thing, the same thing happened in Lewiston. Once they got them, they couldn't wait to use them.
And then we begin collecting single-stream curbside recycling. My time estimates, if council adopts the program, would be somewhere in the six-to-eight month range from adoption to implementation.
Gary, you look like you have a question.
Well-
Or a point.
Again, I'm sorry I was out last week, so I wasn't able to hook up with Tim. Again, I think as part of the, maybe the presentation to city council, we need to put the cost of what we pay for solid waste disposal, collection disposal, next to recycling, because as I said, the system that we have in place now is based on that separate select recycling.
And break out our current recycling cost in the current contract.
Because what do we pay now per ton, Tim? Do you recall?
The rates just went up there, 47, I want to say 80, somewhere in that, for the stuff that's in Oregon.
Okay, what do, what do we pay LSI for sanit-
For recycling.
For recycling at this point? Do you recall, per ton?
$37 and change, I think.
Per ton. Now, your recycling is going to be $75 per ton, which is double what it is now, and you're going to be paying LSI something for handling it.
Will it, you know, and that's, I guess, my question, is it going to take enough out of the waste stream to, to wash that a little bit, you know, and-
I think there will be some bit of a wash, but what we need to remember, too, is that we have a whole new market here that we will be able to spread those costs to, and apartments will be almost doubling our, our market, so that helps-
But increasing your amount, too, though?
Yes.
Which should bring in some extra money, and then it sounds to me like the incremental difference between 37 we pay now and the 75, that's 37 bucks that needs to be made up, and it sounds like, from the cost of the sales with fluctuations, that's getting closer, plus the increased amount that's being sold, plus the increased participation with the apartments, it's sounding to me like it's getting closer and closer to a wash.
Mm-hmm. Well, and remember now that the $75 processing cost is a set fee. The markets of the materials will vary, so there is some return coming back to offset that $75 cost. So it's, it's just going to depend on-
You've got to do, you've got to do an accounting sheet, Gary.
Yep. I do, except those funds are going back to LSI, not back to our rate here.
I understand that, but we, we've got to see the current situation, you know, and then flip it so that you've got increased participation, you've got apartment participation, it's going to reduce how much we're shipping to Oregon.
Do you want to see that back at this committee, or do you want us to bring it to council? Do you want to be able to analyze it here first?
Analyze it here first, I think, you know?
I think we should, and then bring a more finished package to the rest of the-
Right.
The big, the big-
Bring it back here.
The big guess in this whole thing is what that participation rate's going to be, and what kind of tonnages we're going to see, and we-
The good part, Tim, is we're not the first in the neighborhood to do this.
Right.
You've got surrounding communities, you've got other communities in Idaho that have gone to this in the last three or four years, that, that I'm sure they will be, or willing, have been willing, to share their information with you.
It's educating your guess, at least.
Yeah, it won't be a perfect answer, but it will give you some idea of what people have done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Tom, if you would, Tom Lamar?
Tom Lamar, council member. I, I think that this is going to be terrific. It's, I think it's going to be great to have apartments included. I think that we might run into some issues with the glass over time, we might, you know, that might be something that we change and add later, perhaps even later, we do a yard waste, kitchen waste kind of thing, who knows? The one thing I would like to see different in the proposal from what's been presented is to have different-sized containers. There are some of us with very small garages that can't handle a 95-gallon container, no matter what, and would then be forced to opt out of this whole thing, but I think if we had the option to have a 35 container as well, that would be great. I do save a lot of garbage by recycling, but I also don't have that much recycling, so it would be nice to have a small container that, you know, 35 gallons over two weeks is a reasonable amount for, for what I would need, so.
The problem is, you eat up a lot of space with cardboard, and if you're including cardboard in your recycling, cereal boxes, packages from Mama or whatever, it takes up a fair amount of space in a container to get that cardboard in there.
Sure, right, I understand, but I, I just wouldn't have the room in the garage to put a 95-gallon roll cart in, so it would be sitting out, and then I would, you know, I mean, I'm sure there are other people in my situation, so I'm trying to think of my situation as an example of others, but I think people might have a difficulty in storing that container, so that's all my, my point is.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, it sounds like a spreadsheet problem to be put together and to take into account, you know, especially the fate of glass, the cost of shipping glass. Oregon, if people just take to chucking it in the usual trash versus running it out to Safeway, Winko, or the recycling center, how that plays into it. And how much does that take off of, if we do the single stream, how much does that potentially reduce with the inclusion of the apartments? The amount of stuff that we're shipping to Oregon that could be diverted into the recycling?
And does that make up for the increased cost?
Yeah, it's a huge spreadsheet thing.
The problem with glass is, it has, number one, no value, and, number two, it has a negative value if it's in with single stream.
It's heavy.
And it's heavy for shipping.
I see a couple of people in the audience that might have an opinion on this, or some comment or some question, and I'm not going to suggest you come, but if you wish to, I would certainly allow it. But don't feel obligated. Yeah. Dan Schoenberg is a property owner, a property owner representative for apartment buildings, and...
Here with Palouse Properties?
Could be greatly impacted by this.
Well, you know, I appreciate the conversation and, you know, look forward to some sort of implementation on a single-stream recycling. I think it has a lot of benefits to the community. You know, at this point, for our apartment buildings, of course, if our tenants want to recycle, their only option is to go down to the recycling center.
Right.
So, you know, I think the biggest thing we just have to work through are the logistics, and those are just logistics, folks. You present yourself the problem, figure out how to solve it. You know, in an apartment situation, we don't have the opportunity, and it's not really viable, to take roll carts that are sitting inside the parking lot and roll them out to the curb to do that. So we're going to have to determine, in conjunction with the pickup, where's the best location, and how do we house it? You know, it may...
Yeah, they have another bin, basically, that's...
Well, Dan, you're talking about the mechanics.
But that's, that's pretty easy.
This is a conversation Tim and I have already had, in that his vision was the 95-gallon carts for the apartments. My vision was another bin of a different color, set out beside your current garbage bins at apartments.
You may get away with smaller garbage bins.
And I'm thinking the big apartments now, you know, the 16-plex or the 24-plex, those kinds of things.
If we did bins at apartment buildings, what I'd, you know, as an apartment manager, what I'd want to do is, is put your recycling in one location and your dumpster in another.
Right. Paint it and label it different, different ways, sure.
Totally. So those are things, I think, that, you know, logistics, but in terms of the program itself, you know, I think the conversation could go, should go forward and determine how best to do that. So it's a, we're supportive of that. It may not work at all of our buildings, but there'll be a percentage, and there'll probably be a pretty good percentage that they will.
And he's indicating it's, it's a voluntary thing. If you can't make it work or don't want to make it work, you don't have to do it.
Yeah.
Now, what I don't know, Gary, I'm presuming you're not going to come back suggesting that we bill accordingly. In other words, all people on the utility billing for garbage services will pay for it, just like, just like they, they do now for...
Yeah, my anticipation that would be the case. I've not talked to Tim about those possibilities, but we're not talking about changing anything as much as making sure the council has as much information as possible before electing to move ahead.
You'll have to determine how to do that in the commercial properties, because it's not included in the base of commercial at this point.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Andy? Input?
Just a little.
Thank you.
Andy Boyd, Leita Sanitation. I think another aspect we want to maybe look at here is businesses. Currently, we do some business recycling. I mean, cardboard would be one segment that we're already covering. We do do a little bit of other recycling at businesses, but I think as we move forward, we may want to look at the pricing structure, how that's going to work for apartments, and probably move that also into the business, business portion of the program as well, because I think there are certain businesses that would be wanting to take advantage. As we move into the single stream, it makes it more convenient for them to do that.
You're thinking, single stream would entice them to want to recycle where...
Yeah, makes it easier.
Where the separation is a problem for them. Okay?
Right. So that would be another aspect I think we'd want to look into, because currently, we, like I said, we do a little bit of that, and it's not really included in any of the city billing, but I think if we move forward with the single-stream program, I think, you know, I think the cardboard might stay a separate entity, but if we started doing single-stream, because some places where they're doing both, and so I think there's an opportunity there to, to gain more materials and get some participation from the business community.
Do you agree that the every other week is the way to go? That the apartments would be done one week and the residences the other?
From an efficiency standpoint, I think that's a really good model. I mean, it just, it depends on participation rates and how much materials. I mean, there are certain places where they do garbage every other week and recycling every week, so I'm not sure we're quite at that, that level of participation.
Level of detail, okay.
But I think to start off, I think that's a pretty good way to go. I'm, I understand where Tom's coming from, from the container size issue. I'm hesitant to, to say I'm really happy about that idea. I mean, you guys will, will duke that out in council, and that's fine, but it, it does add a certain amount of extra inventory and, you know, just operational issues, so...
All right. What are your wishes?
Well, I think, like we said, you know, we've got to see the columnar tabulations there with the, with all of the, you know, this is where we're at. This is what this proposal will do.
Various permutations and combinations of service.
This is what we could possibly, you know, and again, we're, we're only talking to one side of it. We're not even seeing, I don't know, do we put it out to a proposal before we even look at all this, or...
I think we need to look at the detail of the dollars. We need, we need your spreadsheet.
Yeah, isn't that part of the proposal, though, would be to let the people who are going to be administering it and have a handle on the cost, provide a response to an RFP so we can actually see what...
Do you need the RFP responded to before you can give us the columnar breakdown to explain where the dollars would move and...
I don't believe so. I think it's a matter of, we can, we'll speculate, we'll forecast where we think they'll be, but that'll all be floating based upon what charge, how much is built into the rate now, so on and so forth.
A council decision to move forward with this could very well turn on, we can go to single-stream, folks, it's going to cost you 100 grand a year to do it. Or you go to single-stream, it's going to be a push, you'll save 10,000 bucks or whatever. I think we need that columnar thing in order for the council to vote, get an RFP. We want to look, we want to see if we can do this. Two weeks?
Victoria's got something. We'll sure try.
Somebody said Victoria was doing something? You're behind Tim, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I just wanted to mention, it's not only a space issue to have a 95-gallon can, it is a space issue. I don't want one that big, but I don't want to handle one that big, and I can't possibly fill one up very often. I have a little hill to go, you know, I mean, I, I don't, it, it's not just space. Space is an issue, but handling is too.
Okay.
And if we're being forced to pay for it, I mean, I would opt out rather than have a 95, and yet I will be paying for it. So that, I would like a 35-gallon.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think...
I think we've, I think you've got some direction, Gary. Tim, thank you.
You have enough, I guess, that's the question.
Okay. I, I think we need to see a little better handle on some of the numbers before we ask the council to decide whether to move forward.
I think so far, though, it, it's looking positive.
I think Tim's done a great job, it's just a matter of now predicting what we think it's going to be.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Gaze into the crystal ball.
Okay, the next item is Tyler Palmer and Rod Hall, and the topic is the right-of-way trimming policy appeal consideration. It seems that at, just prior to the last city council meeting, there was a request from the chair of the tree commission suggesting the consideration of the addition of an appeal process on the right-of-way trimming policy that was approved by council at their last meeting. We asked the staff to look at whether or not that was something that was either needed or possible, and I believe these gentlemen have us, have an answer for us.
That's correct. As Mr. Steed stated, we took this to council last council meeting, October 6th, had the discussion. We had some discussion internally with staff on the review process and sent it through legal. It's, it's the opinion of staff that it probably is not in the best interest of the program or the public to have an appeal process built into this program. Actually, let Rod explain why, because he'll do a better job of it than I will.
Good afternoon. The issue on the appeal process is, if we get to that point where somebody gets issued a citation and they want to appeal it, they'll, the actual individual would have better protection in the legal system, because before the city could issue a citation, they're going to have to have a case that they can present to court that's going to be beyond a reasonable doubt, which is the highest threshold in the legal system. Before anybody ever gets cited, it's going to, the facts are going to be that they're in violation of the law, pure and simple, that there's really not a whole lot to argue about.
It's an either-is or is-a situation?
It is. It has to be, you know, it's the highest threshold. I just don't know if it's appeals process, it's come down and said, well, yeah, it's probably in the way, so we should just go ahead and do it, or...
What's to appeal? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And if they were successful in court, then the question would be, why would they be issued a citation in the first place if the city didn't have its facts right?
When, when the staff goes out to conduct the trimming, they go out and they have polls set up at the exact measurements, and it's, it's, there's not a, it's, it's a fairly objective process. It's, it either is or it isn't. It's, it's, it's a measurement, and so there's not a lot of interpretation going on. It's, it's a clean, clear-cut measurement.
Well, and I think that that's, I think a lot of what the appeal question might be is, is a matter of aesthetics, and that's not what we're, we're not about the aesthetics. If you, and I don't want, you know, I don't want to sound harsh, but if you want aesthetics, you hire a guy to come make it aesthetically pleasing. If, if you don't, we're going to come in with a stick, this is where it's going to be, you know, at this height and this width, you know, and, and you're going to, and we'll send you a bill.
Right. And I think that is a lot of it. It's just when the guys are out trimming and then someone says, oh, well, can you even out and cut the backside of the tree, too? And it's, you know, no, we...
We got to go cut that tree down there that's in the way.
And we can only trim what's within our legal ability to trim, and so that's, that's been part of it. And we, we have tried to be really flexible with people as far as, when we do notify, we let them know that if they have questions, give us a call. We're happy to come out to talk to them. So I, I don't want it to come across as this heavy-handed process where we're, we're not friendly in the process. We really try and help people understand it and, and help them through the process. And so really, as far as that initial wanting to talk to somebody about it and make sure you understand, that, that has multiple opportunities to happen through multiple notifications before it ever even gets to a citation point.
Gary?
And I would note that they don't get a misdemeanor unless they fail to comply.
Right.
So it's within their purview to do that. Tyler's exactly right. It's a, you measure, and that should be objective, but I'd remind the council that speeding tickets typically are objective, too. You have a radar gun that's scientifically measuring how fast somebody's going, and speeding tickets get tried all the time. So why not let the courts handle that end of it?
So in other words, if you do get set with a misdemeanor, there are options available, which is going to court to plead your case, right?
Well, you have those, and then, of course, since it's a misdemeanor, the city prosecutor, a remedy might very well be, well, go trim it and I'll dismiss this misdemeanor. That's up to the discretion of the prosecutor. So there are a lot of tools at the disposal, and having an appeal to city council, in my mind, just confuses the issue.
And as long as I've been here, and I know my predecessor said that the main goal of the city services is compliance.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Then I'm going with the staff recommendation to not pursue such.
Gary, I think this is going to be handled just by this committee. It does, it does not need to go to council to move any further. Thank you, gentlemen.
Consider the issue done.
Okay, that concludes our numbered items on the agenda. We've got a couple of reports. Les McDonald is going to talk about downtown signage. Where did Sheena Terusio go?
She apparently had worked back at the shop.
Oh. I was hoping she would be here to listen. Well, good afternoon.
Les?
Thought it would be appropriate to give you an update on where we are in our downtown historic district signage efforts. Something has been going on for some time, and we do have some work ahead of us yet, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. But just to kind of bring folks up to speed on where we are today, you'll recall, a number of years ago now, the city did a call for artists for some artwork related to both historic districts in the city, the downtown district as well as the Fort Russell district, and these were the banners that were developed as part of that effort. The one on the left for downtown is, has been implemented, is in place out there in the downtown area today. Fort Russell banners have not yet been implemented, because we've not yet done anything to designate the district out in the real world, but we do have the design in place for that effort when we get to that one, which frankly would be the next one we do.
Is the Fort Russell envisioned as being banners as well and being, where are you going to put them? I mean, you go put them around the periphery, or what's the thinking?
Yeah, most likely, we would focus primarily on the street name signs, such as we've done downtown, using the, the concept of this manner in a slightly smaller version, obviously, like we did downtown. There may be a few locations where we could consider putting in some banners.
Around East City Park or something.
Perhaps, yeah. Around the East City Park would be a good option. There may be a few other sites, and that district is potentially changing. That's, that's something that's being studied right now, as you recall.
Yeah, there, I remember in the Historic Preservation Commission, there, they may be increasing the size of the district.
The footprint, yeah. It may very well turn out that way. That's being assessed, assessed now. So as that is eventually finalized, and we move into that next phase, we'll take a look at, are there opportunities perhaps that the banner is, is used within the district, maybe at some key locations, key intersections, something of that nature? That's out there a bit, yeah. So for today, on the downtown portion, which we're currently working on, this banner design was eventually used to develop the, the smaller logo, if you will, that's used on the street sign names, street name signs, I should say, downtown, and you've seen these. These are installed now throughout the historic district downtown, so those are in place today. The next effort was to put in some of the regulatory signage relating to parking, so these signs are also in place, as well as some no-parking signs, well, yeah, some, some other signs related to parking restrictions and, and locations. So these are in place, also using, in this case, the, the full image from the banner that was developed for the district. This picture shows you some of those street name signs on the historic-style post with the theme that's essentially been established for downtown in the historic district, really when we first started in the Friendship Square redevelopment some years back. We established this theme of the, the color and the style, this kind of Victorian style, and then the newer signs that are going with that, supporting the district. Our next large effort, if you will, is dealing with what else is in this picture, which is what we affectionately call the surfboard signs. These were the blue informational signs, kind of on the edge of the downtown area. They were established back in about 1981, when the first couplet creation happened.
That's got to be the best...
Best of the lot?
Best of the lot, the tree you took a picture of. It's the best preserved one I can ever remember.
It's not preserved anymore, because they're all gone. But you're right, they were starting to look pretty tired. They'd been out there for a number of decades. The primary focus at that time was to really convey, you know, that it was a downtown pedestrian area, that some of the parking that was being established at that point, the three-hour free parking, you know, we'd gotten rid of meters, we were establishing a downtown parking zone, and the whole redevelopment of the downtown with the exposed aggregate streets and the curb bulbs and the diagonal parking, all of that. So they served their purpose. They were definitely looking very dated, definitely getting worn, and so it was time for them to go. They are all now gone, those particular signs, and the current effort is to develop the replacement of those signs. So to do that, we had to first define what was the purpose of the signs. Back then, as I mentioned, it was really to talk about, hey, this new pedestrian area, right? pedestrian area, right, and the new parking configuration. Well, that's pretty well-known today, and so as we worked our way through this process, we really came to the conclusion that, okay, we need to put in signs that really address the historic district to then follow along the theme of what's being established so far in the district of Friendship Square. And for the most part, the old blue surfboards were kind of in the same areas as the boundary of the district, a few exceptions here and there. And as we were looking at, okay, what should these signs convey, it really became apparent that they really should convey that you're entering the historic district, and what is the district, and what's it about, and then where, you know, where is it located? So, this map represents the boundary of that district, as it was defined some years ago, and the locations that we would be installing the new signs are designated by the stars here. So, there's eight locations. Essentially, every street entrance into the district would receive one of these entrance signs. Okay? And because of that, then, the focus on the signs is really going to be the historic district, and they look consistent with the downtown district theme that has been established over a number of years. So, these are the sign boards that we have developed, and if you'll bear with me for just a moment, and assuming I can make my little exhibit over here work properly, I'll show you what these things will look like at scale.
Oh.
Wow, yeah. So, these are plotted to scale, as to what the size of these signs would be out in the field. I do want to take just a moment and tell you, on the development of these, the original concept came through Melissa Rockwood with Art Design, who helped develop our downtown look, and then Kerry Edwards in Engineering Department, who's our CAD drafter extraordinaire and engineering technician, really created these. And, you know, some input from me is in terms of content. We went through Historic Preservation Commission to talk about content and look and various aspects. And these are hard to see, and certainly for the audience, so I'll go through some of this on the screen with some blowups of what the parts of this are. But I just wanted to give you an idea of how they'll look size-wise, scale-wise, out there in the field, and you certainly can look at these further after the meeting if you desire. What's the different use of the two?
I'll walk you through that.
Or is this the front and the back?
This is a two-sided sign.
Okay.
So, the one on the left is the front of the sign, and the one on the right with the map is the rear of the sign. I'll also point out, the one on the rear is a slightly earlier draft. There's one or two little changes that will occur, have occurred actually in the design. I just didn't have a printed version yet that reflected those changes.
So, which is the current, the projected or the taped?
The one on the left is, is, actually, the one on the screen will show you the final design.
Okay, the screen is, the screen is...
The final design, that's the latest. So, for instance, if you see up here at the top, we went with the this combination rather than the welcome to.
That's what I was looking at.
That's the biggest change, a couple other minor little things. There's a little text up here that got moved to the bottom, that type of thing.
Okay.
So, the one on the screen is the most current edition, and the one is actually is now being sent off to the sign company. So, just to walk through some of the parts of this, and we'll start, actually, right up here with some of the text. The upper part is essentially is the welcome to the district, talks a little bit about what the district is, what it represents, some of the history of the timeframe, and then talking about the buildings within the district, most of them being built between 1889 and 1893, and the significance of those. Okay? The next piece, as you work down, talks a little bit about some of the, well, frankly, the buildings that contributed to the district being recognized under the National Register. There are six individual buildings that are individually identified in the National Historic Register of Historic Places, which are these six right here, so they're identified in the text, and there are 25 other buildings that are contributing, and I'll show you those in a minute. The next thing you'll see down there, major item, is the picture, and this is an image that we have found to be highly interesting. It's circa 1900. We didn't have paved streets yet. This is on Main Street looking north. This is Fourth Street, so Friendship Square, Moscow Hotel. Okay? Hyper Spud would sit in here today, Cosgrove Insurance, New St. Andrews over on this side. This picture, the more we have worked with it, we've been just amazed by the clarity and the depth of this as you really get into it. It's surprising just what there is, and, you know, as much as we've scanned in and enhanced and looked at things, this little guy right over here, we're pretty sure is Wayne Kraus, but we're not quite sure.
(laughing)
He's been around a while here, so. So, anyway, that's the next photo that's down the way there.
And is that, is that time and location identified in the sign?
The time is identified in the sign. I don't know, honestly...
Like there's some printing underneath.
Yeah, there's, it talks a little bit about circa 1900 on Main Street. I'm not sure if it actually says the street location. That's a good point.
Well, that's, just for one person, when they put the old pictures in the newspaper...
Where am I?
First thing I look for is, where is it?
Yeah, and that's one that we did not pick up on previously, so we'll take a look at whether we can still do that. The next section down, which is the bottom of the front sign, this is more of the, you know, city message, if you will. So, we're talking about, you know, pedestrian bicycles still. We get the walk you wheels message in there for sidewalks, encourage to use the street if you're biking, motors go slow, the three-hour parking, free parking message is still in there, that type of thing. So, we've carried that information forward, but it's not as primary in the message that's being conveyed to the city, to the visitors that are downtown. A couple other aspects on the front here, which are a little different for us, is we now have, in our modern age, a website for the Moscow Downtown Historic District, which is a site that is going to be on the webpage. It's actually created, but it's not yet visible to the public, and the good old-fashioned new QR codes. For those of you with smartphones, you just scan that with your phone, and it takes you to that website, and it's gonna, it's gonna bail on me, and it will convey information about the district, and hopefully, we'll eventually be able to bring in information, perhaps from the Historic Society on downtown walking tours, things of that nature, related to the historic businesses and historic buildings. Now, before that front sign falls off the wall, we'll go to the back, and this is an image of that map that you see, and just to kind of zoom in a little bit, because it's hard to read. Here's the Friendship Square area, so that same intersection that was in the photo, just to show you kind of how this is set up. The green dash boundary represents the boundary of the historic district. Of course, Main Streets and the other streets are kind of in this gray tone. I should mention that the color scheme here is consistent with the type of mapping that was done back in the late 1800s, early 1900s. When you look back at the historic maps, this was a style that they used then, where they did the buildings in a block with a color and the kind of the oranges and the salmons, a little bit of green, some of those types of things. So, it's very consistent with that type of mapping. That was the look we were going for. We do identify, of course, Friendship Square. The green block buildings are all, and they're actually a little more, yeah, we'll call them green on this map, they all represent buildings that contributed to the designation. So, they're contributing buildings within the historic district designation. The black hatch here, the black border, represents those individual buildings that are listed on the Historic Register on their own. So, those all contributed, as well as the other green shaded buildings here. The ones that are in this kind of salmon color did not contribute, even though they may have the age, like the Shields Block here, 1891, but they've been modified enough that at the time the designation was done, they were not considered to be contributing to the historic nature and look of the district. That doesn't mean that can't change if somebody was to back up and remove some of those changes that occurred back in the...
And these are existing buildings.
These are all existing buildings.
This is not the location of the Shields Building. This is the Shields.
That's, that's the Shields Building, right, exactly. And then, city facilities are in kind of this brown color, and City Hall happens to show up on the map, police station. Hospitals identified further down. We did bring in a few modern things, like the bus route stops and the bicycle parking and public parking, because people that are visiting are going to be interested in knowing perhaps where those modern amenities are. Those are kind of the few, and we also have the highway and street names, of course, but those are kind of the few of the modern things that are on here, again, focusing on the historic nature of the historic district, what we're trying to achieve, right? So, with all of that, this is the sign installation. What we're working with here is a system that has a two pole, using the historic-style fluted poles that we're already using on the signs downtown for street names and for parking, adding some filigree top and bottom, but with these sign boards that were shown over here, at that scale, is how they would look in their finished roll, finished condition.
If I order eight of these, what do they cost me each?
Now, that I don't know offhand. They have already been ordered. The poles and all the manufacturing of all the metal system is already done.
I think somebody in the room may have an answer.
Tyler might be able to answer that question offhand. I cannot offhand.
Yeah, I can get more accurate numbers, but it was, it was roughly $14,000 for all...
For eight?
Yeah, for all eight.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
So, that is where we are in terms of the overall design. The layout of these and all this information on these signs is ready to go off to, oh, actually, it was...
It's actually already gone.
Conveyed, yeah. We may need to tweak it and send it again tomorrow morning with one more item. But yes, those are on their way, and so they're going to begin to give us proofs on the signage to make sure it all works. Actually, one thing I forgot to mention earlier is in the layout of these, these letters at the top actually are going to be metal about like this.
Oh, cool.
Okay, but they'll be white in this case. So, just to give you an idea of, they will actually stand out from the sign face a little bit to give it a little bit of character. Everything else will be a printed or applied vinyl in some form. The sign or the map itself will be a separate piece that's actually placed onto the metal backing of the overall system, so it could be updated as needed if there was a time we need to do that, or if there's damage to it in some fashion along the way.
With the weather changing, do you anticipate being able to install these yet this calendar year?
Yeah, Tyler and I have been talking about that. It's anticipated it'll take them four or five weeks to actually finish manufacturing the sign boards themselves and then shipping everything here. If we're averaging one of these a week with other workload and weather and things coming along with the eight signs, obviously, it's going to take us, you know, eight weeks, maybe 12 weeks, depending on winter. These can be done through the fall and into the winter, because the concrete work is pretty limited, and so you're able to blank it out.
Are they drilled and then epoxyed in or something?
The bases, I think, they actually cut out a section and worked the base in, and then they have to do some pour back.
You have to put concrete back in.
Yeah, yeah, but it's in pretty small areas, and so we can deal with that in cold-weather concrete.
Can the post be put in before the signs arrive?
Maybe Tyler's going to answer.
You make footsteps behind you.
I do.
You might as well just stay, Tyler.
It's funny, because I'm usually the guy that comes up and does this, so, yeah.
With the, with the installation of these, it's important for the sign alignment. We actually want to attach the signs before we set the posts in the holes, because that way we can keep them aligned.
I think the answer could be, yeah, we could, but we don't dare.
Yeah, we could, but we don't want it. It's more important that it's all level and looks nice, and so...
All right.
So, that's where these are. That would take us through installation, you know, maybe late February completion, something like that. This is currently where we are. And just real briefly, unless you have other questions, the next step is wayfinding, okay? This is where we're heading soon. So, we don't have budgets yet for installation of these, but this was initial concept on what some of our wayfinding might look like, just, you know, again, within the district, something that would look different outside the district, some ties to the university's wayfinding theme, because they have that also, so we're trying to work with their color scheme as well on ours. But this is potentially what some of our wayfinding signing in the downtown could look like, and just a quick mock-up of what one of them might look like in the field. You see the old blue surfboard-related wayfinding in the background. Those are still out there in a few spots, but mostly gone. So, we'll be replacing those in time over the next couple of years with something perhaps like this, again, following the theme in the downtown district, and probably a different look outside.
We may want to check with U of I's where they want their entrance to be now with their, all their new entrance stuff down there along the highway.
There you go.
You know, that Stadium Way might be their new, this is how you get in.
Which way do you put the arrow at that intersection?
Certainly.
For the University of Idaho? Or do you put two?
Yeah, exactly.
You may, you may, depending on which intersection. This particular one, this is the third, so you could go a couple of directions from here.
I like the implied promise of the airport with a four-engine jet up there.
Okay, large scale, or 737 coming in?
Well, that's better than a 737. It's got four engines.
That's true.
Any questions?
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Les. You don't get to leave, though. You get to talk to us about the sidewalk project at 525 South Jackson or...
Jimmy John's.
Jimmy John's.
On this, other than I just wanted to pull up one slide just for folks' reference.
I presume this is a status report.
It is, and this is one that you saw before this particular presentation, but just to help folks remember, the Jimmy John's site, 525 South Main, or Jackson, excuse me, located at the northwest corner of Jackson and Sixth Street. And what we've been talking about out there is the concept of developing an expanded sidewalk system, bringing the curb line on out, similar to what we've been doing on MSI, and if you've been out on Jackson lately, you'll see MSI as well on its way with this treatment. We have been in continued discussions with the Idaho Transportation Department, Lewiston Office. The district engineer has been up here, actually met with Gary a week or so back. We've had a number of conversations with them. The current position of ITD is that they are not supportive of this concept, and that was as of...
And being not supported means they won't let us build it.
They won't let us build it. That was as of Friday. We received a letter from the district engineer, Dave Quisti, with that position. We're not yet done with those discussions. I believe there's a meeting tomorrow.
Actually, Mr. Quisti will be back.
Back tomorrow, so the idea is to try to meet here in the next couple of days to discuss their findings a little bit further and determine if there's anything yet that could be done to allow us to move forward. So, at the moment, we're a little bit on hold pending that for this improvement. What we are doing in the meantime, working in engineering and with our consultant, we are laying out the alternative, which is that if ITD in the end cannot be convinced that this is something that is functional and safe, and will not allow this, then what else do we do? The sidewalk is already out. It was taken out by the developer, Jimmy John's, so what do we put back? So, we're working up a concept that would work within the existing curb line, where it is today, and the seven feet from there to the property line and maybe another six inches to the building. What do we put in? Could we include the lights? Could we include perhaps trees with a reduced size tree well, maybe four foot instead of five, and still maintain the concept of what we're trying to do here, but just in a narrower walk that hopefully is not too constrained? So, that's something that we're working on right now in the design as the, you know, fallback in the event that we're not able to change ITD's mind.
Be persuasive.
Yes.
We have been attempting to do so.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. With that, we are adjourned.